To the public and we'll be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. The agenda and reports for today's meeting are available on the council's website and via the Modern Gov app. Paper copies are also available. Can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? And just to let you know, there is no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the town hall staff. The assembly point is Tudor Square. We'll do introductions, I believe. We also have Claire Taylor joining us remotely. But, okay, Claire is not attending. Apologies for that. So first of all, ask members to introduce themselves. I'm Fran Belbin, the Chair of the Governance Committee. Go that way. Mary Lee, councillor for Donald Wood.
Mark Russel, councillor for Shire Green in Brightside.
Apologies, colleagues, I've not yet looked in. I'm Eldred, councillor for Manicastle.
Paul Turpin, Green councillor for Gleethers Valley.
Mike Leary, councillor for West Ecclesfield.
Tim Huggan, councillor for Crooks and Crossbow.
Sue Alston, councillor for Fullwood. And we do also have councillor Diane Hurst just joining us, I think, on behalf of Julie Growcutt. She's not yet signed in, I'll do that for her, if that's okay. If officers could introduce themselves, please.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm James Anderson, Director for Policy and Democratic Engagement.
Good afternoon. David Hollis, General Councillor.
Jay Bell, Democratic Services Officer.
Alice Nicholson, Policy and Improvement Officer.
Jason D, Chair of Democratic Services.
Thank you. And we do have apologies from councillor Julie Growcutt and councillor Hurst is substituting for Julie at today's meeting. Item three, we have no items to exclude the press and public. Item four, can I ask whether any members wish to declare an interest in any of the items of business on the agenda? No. In that case, we will move to item five, which is the minutes of the previous meeting. Can members approve as a correct record the minutes of the meeting held on 11th of July 2024? Yes, happy with those, thank you. Item six, public questions and petitions. We have received one public question submitted by Ruth Hubbard relating to the remit of the Governance Committee. That question and the response has been published online and shared with members of the committee. Ruth has submitted a supplementary question and is here to ask it.
Thank you. In response, the strict word limits prevent me saying much. However, I appreciate being able to put some record, but unfortunately, I don't really accept this answer. I've now got four varying explanations here on emails and via FOI. For clarity, I requested an invitation three times and the answer to my question is that I was the only stakeholder directly excluded. Of course, my voice is ultimately no more or less valid than anybody else's, though I remain unsure what difference one more participant would have made. The wider point is that it's vital for both participation and decision-making. The active, informed stakeholders witness how the council might be trying to do things differently, to support, encourage, and yes, critique and challenge too. So actively excluding your most engaged, longstanding stakeholder in the governance change work of this committee is an error and a known goal. Given widespread disengagement and public criticisms of the council's failure to listen, will the committee at least ensure that for subsequent events, data release permissions are routinely sought from participants to at least bring basic transparency to who the council is selecting to have a direct voice in reshaping its governance for participation?
Thanks, Ruth. In a quick response to that, and I'm happy to give you a longer response in writing following the meeting, but on a quick reflection, I want to say, first of all, I do appreciate that public questions is not the best way to have a conversation sometimes around this.
And we've had a separate conversation.
Indeed. You and I have discussed this at length in other forums and so on as well, so I'm more than happy to continue having those conversations as well. But I do appreciate that you want things to be on the public record. So I know you've submitted some other questions as well that there wasn't room to include. And I know we've got statements coming up on public questions, so perhaps I can respond a bit further there. I would dispute that you've had four different answers to that question. I think all the answers that you've had to that question have been entirely consistent and, again, were mainly the result of the way that we were planning that event and how the balance of people that we wanted at that event to ensure that we had community partners as well as officers, as well as elected members, and those that we had already approached to be involved in this work that had some expertise and had responded positively to that invitation, they were the people we wanted to invite to the event. I think in one of your questions you've submitted in written, I think you questioned whether it was a real community engagement event, and I think one of the things that we were trying to do there was very specifically, and I will say more about this later when we come on to the item about community engagement, was that it was very specifically looking at how the council engages with our partners and with the public at large. And as an initial event, we really wanted to get people who had that professional experience of engaging with the council, which necessarily meant working with people who we do work with regularly as partners. In terms of your question there...
We talked 20,000.
Sorry?
We talked 20,000.
Well, arguably. Again, I think on your final part of your question there, in terms of the data release permissions, that's not something I'd want to commit to here. That's something I'd want to have conversations with about people who come along to events and how happy they are. I do think there is a need sometimes and that people want sometimes a space where not everything they say is going to be directly attributed to them, and I think that's important. And I want to have that discussion in relation to any event that we were having, rather than giving some blanket commitment, saying that we're going to do data release forms all the time. That's just a quick response, but I will give you a longer response in writing.
Thank you.
Stay there, Ruth, because we are now going to move on to statements. I'm very pleased that since we introduced the new public questions system and we introduced the possibility of having statements, we had our first statements at full council yesterday and now we have our first statements at Governance Committee. So I know, Ruth, there is one from yourself, one from Wal Nual, that you are going to read on Wal's behalf. Because we're both in the same general area, I will give you a response to both of those when you've made both statements.
Okay. So Wal's is actually a statement from SOS, from Sheffield Oversight and Scrutiny, and it's a very quick initial response. SOS welcomes arrangements for greater equality of access to PQs, the new public statement provision and somewhat improved information, but content's too complex, on the website. One, the biggest omission is the failure to embed any consideration of impacts and outcomes from PQs, ultimately what matters in terms of responsiveness and shifts the council claims it's trying to make. Two, an overemphasis on complex rule-based procedures overshadows and undermines the equality of access improvements. People asking PQs aren't applying for benefits, the council shouldn't be replicating that culture. Three, limits on public question numbers and a 200-word limit is far too restrictive, especially when several committees receive no or nearly no public questions. They're not like member questions, people aren't necessarily experienced, and complex or personal or unknown about issues are regularly brought to PQs. Members will want to hear and understand. Four, the opportunity for supplementary questions is too limited, unwieldy, complex and overbureaucratized, and I think I've experienced that in the last couple of days, as you know. The requirement to submit supplementary in advance is defensive. It gives the impression that councillors cannot possibly cope with a real brief exchange with the public that's not entirely controlled and managed. It's all rather given with one hand, improve general access, and take away with the other, restrict and shut down actual scrutiny, where PQs currently provide the only built-in public opportunity for this.
And do you want to give your statement as well, Ruth?
Yeah, so this is my personal statement. And it's again on the new PQ scheme. I've asked 48 public questions at Governance Committee since the end of 2021, it was actually, I think, over two years, relating to 16 Governance Committee meetings over this period. Under the new scheme, an absolute minimum of a third of my public questions would have been refused for numbers of questions and for word length. I've pretty much been the only person asking PQs at Governance Committee, and that's because I was charged by an ITS R City AGM with the task of following through on the governance and democracy issues that 20,000 citizens talk to us about in conversations across the city. PQs has been the only way to do this in any public way, as disgracefully, this committee has consistently refused to directly involve citizen stakeholders in shaping the change post-referendum. And it's disgraceful because the requirement for change was wholly driven and delivered by citizens, not this council. I now understand the new scheme seeks to further restrict and reduce my citizen stakeholder scrutiny in Governance Committee via PQs. This seems at least at odds with what this council claims is its direction of travel. Of course, I suppose I can always ask others to submit the PQs so that they come in under another name, but this seems unnecessarily cumbersome and rather self-defeating. Thank you.
Thank you. I think the first thing to say in response is that we're absolutely going to review the changes to public questions and statements. I think that will come up later in this committee when we get to the work programme item, and I think we were talking about doing that from around next March to give it a chance. Effectively, the new system kicked in in September, so that will give us six months to reflect on. We will absolutely seek the reviews of citizens and especially those who often ask public questions into that review. A couple of quick reflections, though, again, on what you've said. Again, I accept there are some committees that get very few public questions, there are some that get an awful lot, and it does feel that we need to ensure that all citizens have a chance to ask questions at some of those committees.
Agreed.
And that it's not just taken up by one or two people asking, as you may sometimes see in the members' question process, where, you know, one councillor may ask 24 questions of a particular committee member, for example. So I think we do need to find a way to find balance around that. I do think that what we did around public questions really did involve our citizens, and I accept, again, that that might be the exception rather than the rule, but I hope at least on Governance Committee we have shown some commitment to that approach of involving citizens more, and certainly through the community engagement work, we're very much seeking to do that further. Again, I recognise a lot of what you say around since the system was introduced and how much public involvement we've had around decision-making, and that is something that we will continue to look at as a council and through this committee. So again, there are a few quick reflections and happy to provide further in writing, if you'd like. I'll be with you.
Thanks very much, Chair. Just on the new system for public questions, I do feel that it is well-meaning and trying to improve it, but we've acknowledged that it's having teeth in troubles. And so it's kind of, it's based on how they do it in Bristol, and I'll be actually going to Bristol in a couple of weeks to meet some Green councillors and I will ask them how they feel like it's going for them, because, you know, any system is fine when it's established and people understand it, and I think that's a problem. Last week, we've discussed the lower number of public questions in both the WIPs meeting and within this group. And then for the full council, I know of a, there was a campaign group who tried to put a question forward and read two clear days as Monday, 9am, and then were not allowed to put their question in because it was after the Friday, 9am deadline, you know, and I think that we really need to be flexible in this learning period. And, you know, and who's to say that when people like, well, in fact, you've literally just said that, you know, people are often repeat, they put questions in frequently. And so when those people come to us and get it wrong and are then prevented from asking their questions, it isn't a good look and it doesn't show that we're trying to engage better with the public. It shows the opposite of that, and that's not our intentions. So I think that, you know, when those people who do frequently ask questions come forward and misunderstand the new system and get it wrong, it's a chance to teach them how the system works while continuing to engage with them. And I think we failed to do that. That didn't happen, and I don't know whose fault that was yesterday, but that didn't happen with that group. And I also don't know if there were other individuals or groups who put questions in the wrong timeframe. So I think that in this six-month or so learning period, we have to be more flexible and explain, okay, we will accept your question now, but next time, can you get it in the right timeframe? And whatever other little parts of the new system that they need to learn.
Thanks, Paul. I think we can take that on board. I think we have one example, for example, when the veterans came in to ask a question at public questions, where we found an alternative way around it, because, again, they hadn't used the system right. And you've reminded me, I'm going to respond to another point in Wal's statement, which was around, I think we've put the system in, we've put the system in place, but not all the supporting mechanisms are properly in place yet, I would say. And that includes perhaps some of the explanations about how to do things, but also the very important point around the follow-up and what actions are taken as a result of a question. That information is logged and we are logging it, but it's not yet in the form that we're able to share it with the public, but we are looking into ways of doing that and making sure that people will be able to see a history of when the question was asked, what was asked, and what action was taken as a result of it. And as I say, it is logged, it's working through systems for making that information publicly available, but yes, take all those points on board.
The equality of access is huge.
Yeah.
Much better.
Diane?
Thank you, Fran. Yes, just a brief comment, really, that follows on from what Paul said. There are unintended consequences of the new system, unintended from my point of view, anyway, because we worked very hard last year and the year before as governance to try and engage with a broad range of people and make the system usable and accessible and broaden out the range of people that may want to have their say but would find the older system more cumbersome. And I have asked questions, I've raised it in the corporate WIPs meeting, and we did, in fact, raise it before full council in the WIPs meeting, and I'm glad to know that it's been locked at governance and that there is a piece of work carrying on there. And I hope, as a substitute member of this committee, I'll keep on dipping in and dipping out because we have a chance to make a difference, but it's no good if we don't learn from our mistakes and our errors along the way. Thank you. And I do apologise for my voice, it appears to be giving way. Perhaps it says something about how much I talk.
Thank you, Diane, and you are always welcome at Governance Committee, of course. You're lucky as well that I haven't yet started coughing all the way through this meeting, but I'll apologise in advance if I do because I'm also suffering a little bit at the moment. I will move us on to item seven on the agenda, which is the update on community engagement and the Governance Committee Public Involvement Working Group. Just before, I hand over to Alice. I just did just want to introduce this by saying, and I think, again, this has come up in some of the questions that Ruth has asked via email, that we do have a number of pieces of work going on around community engagement more broadly. There's a piece of work that S and R Strategy and Resources Committee are doing around a community strategy. There is a theme of community engagement under future Sheffield, as well as the work that the Governance Committee is carrying out. And I know Alice is going to describe in a bit more detail what Governance Committee is looking at, but we do recognise that it can be quite confusing that there are different strands of work going on. And one of the things that we're discussing with the officers is how to map that work out and make it a lot clearer to members of the public, as well as to members and indeed officers themselves, around how all this work fits together. We do see it as work that needs to fit together and it not work that carries on in lots of separate pieces of work happening in isolation, but we will bring that to a future Governance Committee and perhaps to other committees doing similar work as well in order to clarify that. But I will now hand over to Alice to introduce this report.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, it's an update, as it says, on the work of the working group. Alan, are you in charge of the slides next week? I just thought it'd be helpful to, everything on here is just drawing out the key points from the report in front of you, so if you've had a chance to read it, great. If you haven't, don't worry. I think it's important to just remind yourselves that it is slow, but there has been progress and that the involve report was published this time last year through this committee. It's become very much embedded in the council plan, and it is very much about developing a new comprehensive vision and approach to engaging citizens, because we do need, as an organisation, help to kind of listen and work together with communities. You, as I was established, a cross-party working group, which I will say includes people not solely from the Governance Committee, but is a good cross-party spread across the groups. July this year, and though this wasn't, the strategy's important and I think tees this out, the Strategy and Resources Policy Committee had a paper where they very much endorsed the need for a vision, but very much, again, that this be led by the Governance Committee. Along those, at that point, they also talked about a statement of intent to make sure that we do become a high-performing council in terms of our community engagement, and that they agreed what a set of foundations for good engagement. This is for officers, it's to help guide officers and services who are already doing engagement work. So rather than kind of sequentially wait for a vision and then think about delivery, it's about, let's get something good going now whilst also there's a lot of work being done on the vision by yourselves. And I think it's important to tease out as well that there was a, in all of this, there was reference to a medium term. Not everything is going to be, can be done immediately, and that this was about making sure that we did have an open approach and that we are led by citizens and users of our service and that we are more proactive in reaching out, and particularly, I think, the use of the word consistent approach. Moving on, I don't know if you, hopefully this little circle is familiar to everybody now, and I think it's important to stress that actually in the context of the council, the organisation, the vision is very much about what we're calling the council's policy triple lock. That's those three elements in the middle of that circle, people, prosperity, planet, because this is very much about actively engaging, working together, and actually making us a city and our communities prosper and be resilient. And I think it's fair to say that a community engagement vision is very much delivering and developing it the essence of our mission, that is, together we do get things done. And particularly that council outcome three about people living in a caring, engaged community. And I'll just touch on the fact that actually all of this is one of our contributions as an organisation to delivering city goals, so supporting that better collaborative working. I think the other point I really want to tease out is around, if we move on to equality, diversity and inclusion, and it's really important that we recognise that the work we do here is about meeting our duty under the Equalities Act. A vision is a way to make sure we engage with all the people from all backgrounds in Sheffield, that they can participate and get involved. And we must make sure that how we change our ambition does enable and support greater participation from different communities in the city. There isn't an EIA associated with this very particular report in front of you because it's an update report, but absolutely, we're moving to a place now where we need to really start building an EIA to fully assess and the impact of the vision. And it might actually be a way of teasing out, I think, how you could use the vision, make sure there are certain elements in it, so it's a little bit of both as far as I can see, and that in doing that, if we do that in co-production, we can, along the way, assess with our partners and communities how this feels, it is actually delivering on our EDI duties. So in there, there's a proposal in this report, which has three key elements to it that are your three recommendations that you're asked to consider. One, we've supplied in here output from that 5th of September workshop, there's a set of slides and appendices, and it's very much, this was a first step in a collaborative approach. It was never meant to be the one and only, and that it's very much ongoing. We have to start somewhere and absolutely keep going. And to help with that, we've also talked about a timeline for developing this vision, divided it up, if you like, into five stages. The first one, we've kind of gone through now, and there are four that roughly be from now until hopefully early summer next year. We know right now we've got to involve and engage with stakeholders and partners. As I said, that is not over, that is not done, and that this will also start to overlap into co-production of a vision, so we get a good cycle going on, I think, between hearing, listening and producing. With any luck, an end goal of a vision adopted with a strategy for delivering, as I say, summer next year, loosely, summer, depends what your definition, I think, of summer is. But very much, what I also want to draw attention to is that immediate next step, that I think the working groups see that a collaborative workshop around models of engagement is very significant, and that over time, so that will be the next thing that I hope we can get on the table, as it were, and get people invited to and get going on, because there are some concerns around what is the best model of engagement that will work for the city. And that the working group itself, I think, should be allowed to kind of refine about how it actually does work widely and collaboratively. Listening to some of the points that have been raised through the questions and the public question and the statements, we've had some offers of help, I think it'd be good to take those up, and then, of course, to provide further updates to this Governance Committee. So the recommendations on page 17 are made to ensure that you, as a committee, are actually leading on development of a vision for community engagement and responding to that involve report and delivering on actually what is the council plan and the commitments that have been made in it. I hope that helps with a sort of extra run through. I don't know if there's any questions for me or for the Chair.
Thank you, Alice, and I think it's probably worth reflecting that some of the feedback that did come from that workshop in September did suggest that the model that involved, that was in the involve report, was probably too linear and didn't feel as if it was in the right place for Sheffield at the moment, which is partly why this would be the next stage for this work. Can I see any comments or questions, Mark?
Yeah, just echoing that last point, Fran, from my table on the 5th of September, I think we felt there was a lot of good stuff in the five models, but the models themselves didn't quite work. But I think it'd be a shame to chuck out everything within the models, because there was definite agreement within there that there was stuff that would work for us. My question, I don't know which side of the room I'm asking it to, and I came to this committee halfway through, so apologies if this was answered previously, but are we basing what we're doing on something that has worked elsewhere? Are there specific examples of this working in places that are analogous to Sheffield? Or are we almost designing something from scratch for us?
In answer to that, councillor Russel, I think it's a bit both. I feel we're, in some ways, we're now moving to the stage of designing something for ourselves that works for us, having heard about other examples, but the models workshop, the models of engagement workshop, I think it's going to be another mix of hearing about other models and, again, as you said, picking out what might actually work, but making sure we have something that's very Sheffield-specific. So it's still, let's build, but let's not be fully... So it's still, let's build, but let's not be fully tied into perhaps something that's worked elsewhere, but it's totally wrong not to actually look at what does work and maybe what doesn't work and then make it reflect what Sheffield actually needs. And I suspect there'll not be a single model.
I think my reflection on that would be that even if you end up using a model that has been used elsewhere, it's actually the process of deciding to use it and the discussion that you have around it, that is the most valuable part of that, that you end up with something that people are fully engaged with because they've been through that process. Mary?
Yeah, a model, you know, whichever model you decide to do, sounds, it feels like it's quite rigid sometimes and our communities are not like that. Our communities are different from one end of the city to another and we've talked about hard-to-reach communities and the language we might use when we're talking to these hard-to-reach communities. And there's all sorts of different hard-to-reach communities, you know, they're not all the same either. So how, you know, there has to be some way of making that model flexible and amenable and able to get to address whatever we want to talk to people about in a way that they find easy to respond to, I guess. Does that make sense?
It absolutely makes sense councillor Ian. I think this was one of the things that came out that day, but it's also been coming out, I mean, the more I've been sort of looking into this, that it's a model, but it might be more, I hate loose, but a framework, but actually within that, I think we still need some structure because we need a bit more consistency. But it will have to be adaptable and flexible and that's what is going to be asked by, I know, certain groups of community. So they want us as an organisation to be clear about what it is we're trying to achieve and then to give some examples of how we might get to that point in terms of engagement. But it, I think it has to be flexible, but allow for consistency too. So a challenge, a subtlety, quite a bit of work to get to that point, but I think that's what's right because Sheffield isn't the same wherever you go. And actually depending on what you're doing, you might need to ask different people slightly different questions, but that's not to say, you can't say, but at the end of the day, we want to make sure we have spoken to everybody about this particular issue. Or if we're going to engage, we need to make sure that all, you know, a statement that everyone feels they've had an opportunity to engage. So yeah, it'll be, I think, more in the lines of framework with a lot more flexibility, but absolutely making sure we've got consistency in our approach. So as much as the vision, I think it's what comes with it in that the delivery plan, which will kind of come out of it, makes it clear to everyone in the city and in the organisation about what we want to achieve and how's the best way to do it.
I think there's probably things within the foundations for good engagement as well that really ask officers when they're thinking about engaging with particular communities, about the needs of those communities and about who it is they're trying to engage with in order to do so in the most effective ways, which is going, might be different. You know, it's different engagement with young people than it is with older people. For example, there's lots of subtleties around that, I think we would pick up on soon.
Thank you, yeah. I've got a comment and a couple of questions I made. My comment is just following on from that. We also might need different models of engagement depending on the sort of decision it is. If it's a decision that affects large parts of the city, large numbers of communities, or just one very specific community, how long a term is that decision depending on, you know, what it is. So all that has to be taken into account when you're working out how you're going to use the best process of engagement. My sort of shortish question really is about timescales. I imagine, as a member of the public, I would be wanting to see better public engagement from our policy committees much sooner rather than later. And whereas no one wants to rush this and get it wrong, I do feel we need to demonstrate some tangible progress. And I just wondered whether we've actually got, I know there's a sort of rough timetable here on page 20, whether we've actually got meetings written in, whether we've got some diary dates and can we make sure that this doesn't just drag on and never reaches a conclusion, which is always a concern with the very discussive, discursive, whatever word, pieces of work. My other question is really just going right back to the very front page of this report where it says, public involvement working group, the governance committee, public involvement working group, in developing a vision for community engagement for the council. But I understand there are also other committees and other groups within the council also working on community engagement. And I just wondered if we could be clear who's doing what and how we all meant to know the difference.
To that last point, yes, I think there is something about pulling all that together. Depending on what environment you're in, you may or may not be briefed. As officers, we're very, very conscious of all those different aspects and strategies and that are being developed. And there is a sort of steering or a team looking at those, but we also know that that's something very quickly we need to get our heads around how it maps out, how they interlink so that we don't have duplication, but we also work out, you know, who's doing what, if you like. But I also think there is something around, as part of this for me, I was thinking only about this today, there's something around a message that is helpful for councillors to actually understand all these different elements and how they fit together, that perhaps from what I'm hearing, there is more knowledge briefing, to use that phrase, that's needed to make sure everyone fully understands all the strategies that are interlinked, what their timeline might be and how actually they are going to play out. I think as officers, we're possibly a little bit more understanding and I'm not sure that there's enough out there for all the members in the room yet. Forgive me if I've got that wrong, but that's just a sense I've come away with. James, I don't know if there's anything more you want to add because I think you're more familiar with some of the other strategies than I am.
Thank you, through you Chair. Yes, so I think as Alice has said, it is undoubtedly the case, as councillor Alston has said, that there are other pieces of work. And sometimes those are in relation to regulatory requirements, for example, around the way in which we engage with our tenants in housing services. So there is that other work ongoing. However, as Alice has said, what's important is that we ensure that there is some consistency across the way in which we engage through all of our various different services across the council. And that's what I think this piece of work needs to do, so recognising that there are those different things that come about because of the different regulatory environments within which we work to one extent, but also because of the needs of different service areas. But it's about creating that layer of consistency and to support that work, as I think the paper identifies, there is now a network, a core network of sort of officers who are working around engagement and involvement to draw all of that together and make sure that we are acting in that consistent way, in line with the approach that the committee is developing. So I hope that helps.
And if I could perhaps add, oh, sorry.
Yeah, I think that just actually sounds even more foggy, I'm sorry. But there are clearly various groups or meeting doing various things and I think it would just be useful to know what they are and who they are and what their remits are. I was told, I'm going to say this out loud now, I was told by an officer that the person I should ask is the governance lead for my group. And given that that's me, that really just told me that actually some of the things that are going on this council are really quite opaque.
Thanks, so I think we'll take that on board and I think, I was trying to refer to that as well at the start of the item and that we do need some clarity around that and I'll discuss with James and other officers how we can map that out so it is a lot clearer who is working on what and how the pieces of work interlink. The other point I just made in relation to what you were saying around length of time and so on is I do think we can look at particular pieces of engagement as well, that will be learning pieces and demonstrators. We don't have to wait until this work, that a big piece of work has been carried out before we start trying to do pieces of work that affect, engage more effectively with communities around them. And I know we're in discussion about particular areas of work that we might be able to do that with. Diane next.
Cheers Fran, thanks. It's really a comment and a reflection because I don't think we can underestimate the complexity of all the strands, pieces of work that we've been doing over the last four years probably. And some of that has reached a conclusion, some of it is still very much in the review and have we got it right and test the water and go forward stage. And I think the picture is getting more complex and more foggy. And it probably often does that, doesn't it, where you clear a cupboard out, it looks like a complete tip until you, you know, you've decided what you need to throw away and what you need to keep. So it doesn't, you don't get any clarity until towards the end. And I think that's the important thing, just to bear in mind that we're not going to get it right first time and that we need to build in a period of reflection and review so that we can revisit some things that have worked and look at why they've worked and revisit other things that haven't worked and also understand that. Because not all of our communities react in the same way and not all of them have the same degree of capacity or ability to interact with us at the same level. So it's, you know, it's all the more complex because councils have to be all things to all people at a time of diminishing resources. So that that ability to build in some time for reflection and admit that we're not going to get it right first time, just take that assumption straight away and revisit things. And, you know, you haven't failed if you have to adjust things. It's the quality of learning in the organisation. If you think, well, we didn't get quite get that right, let's revisit it and see how we can do it differently and learn from what we've done.
Thanks Diane. Tim?
With this increasing Byzantine system of governance we've got here in Sheffield with the Meritty above etcetera, because one of the things is, is that some of the decision-making, part of it is Sheffield, part of it will be the South Yorkshire Meritty and sometimes with the parishes that we have within Sheffield. And, you know, had this discussion at the Meritty and the scrutiny committee, which was basically a big decision that's likely to happen next year, which is on buses, for instance. And when we were querying how much they're engaging with the city council, there should have, there was lots and they were going to do. But then when you question deeper, there appeared to be not very much engagement about one of the biggest decisions that's going to happen to our area in years. And one of the things I would like to know is how much you are being engaged and how much have you set your eyes above just Sheffield, but the decisions that are taking, taken very close to us via the South Yorkshire Meritty. Because the community engagement, that lots of us, this is from all parties on the scrutiny committee, were asking, especially, and I can assure you that the Labour colleagues and Greens that are from Sheffield that are on the committee were as engaged as everybody else on this. It was, please talk to us about how we deal with community engagement. And these are the sort of methods you can go to, which I say it's surprising that we had local area committees, you could possibly do some engagement through that, there are parish councils, there's the city council structures. How much is that happening? Because, you know, the buses are probably the thing that affects most people's lives and it's just one instance of how we engage with people and at what level. Because are we using all the structures that are in place here, but also are we talking and sharing that knowledge with structures very close, just down the road here to us on issues that affect people's lives here, right here and now? And so that we can give adequate input as well? Because, you know, we keep getting told it's a public consultation. I think, I'm not, I'm not clear what that public consultation is happening apart from a note going out from above. Is, because I'm not aware that there's any consultation going on through even the structures of Sheffield City Council at any great level. And if that's not happening there, how's it, how the community been involved in this? And it is something that we need to get right because if we get it wrong, then we'll never hear the last of it for years to come. So really how much are you engaging with the other structures that are about? And can you please share some of your information with the South Yorkshire Meritty as well?
Thanks.
I can take some of that Chair. I think for me, personally, I'm not familiar with the engagement that's going on with the buses because that's not part of, that's not part of the role. It's not part of my role to be familiar with that exact level of engagement. However, I think councillor Huggan, you make a very good point around the fact that we need as part of our engagement vision, but part of the work we're doing, you're doing to reach that vision, to look at what that relationship might be with our partners, where there is to be, perhaps there should be some shared community engagement, where decisions lie elsewhere outside of the council, that actually what you flagged up is something that we need to definitely look at and weave into that vision. So I'm not trying to be kind of unhelpful, I'm just not fully familiar with the buses because I'm not in that line of work, that service area. But I absolutely hear your point and I think it is something that we need to, you, the working group, the committee, need to think about how we develop that into the vision. I don't know again if James wants to add anything or not to that.
Nothing particular to add, just to reinforce the point really that Alice has made, that clearly the way in which we work with our partners and our partners work with us, which I think is perhaps the point that you're making councillor Huggan, is really important and something that I think needs to be considered through this, through this group. There is some engagement going on and I think I'm right in saying that Transport, Rejen and Climate Change Policy Committee will be considering the council's response to that consultation. But I think the broader point is definitely something that we should pick up through this work. Thank you.
Just one thing, because one of the things is, is that there's bits of money that goes to the South Yorkshire Meritty and then a lot goes to Sheffield. And then from what I'm hearing, I've heard, you know, is, you know, that then, you know, how, you know, where does, who, whose responsibility is it to do that engagement at a level? And it's, and I know it's a bit of catch-up because the peaceful, or the particularly last government way that devolution happened meant that suddenly the Meritty in particular would find itself with another power that it hadn't had before. But it's only a partial power because some, a lot of it would still reside with, for instance, Sheffield City Council as we're sitting here. But then a quarter would reside with South Yorkshire Meritty. So it's something that we've got to play catch-up with because otherwise, you know, we saw what happened on Tuesday. If we leave our communities behind, that we are, we are in real, real danger. The disaffected masses out there will be taken, will be led astray, led down some promised land by Farageist-type, Trumpist-type people. And if we're not engaged with the community and feel they are empowered because we haven't focused in on little things like this early on, we, it's a real danger.
Thanks. Just a couple of points I'd add on that one, I think is, I don't understand if I'm on this, all the detail of everything you're asking for there. Absolutely, the general point around community engagement, community engagement and the importance of communities not feeling left behind, I totally agree with you on. I think what's happening at the moment in terms of the consultation, SIMCA are standing out, is the statutory consultation around bus franchising is taking place. I think it's largely an online consultation. As far as I know, that is SIMCA who have the funding to do that and I'm not clear if they are doing anything beyond the online consultation in terms of how they're reaching out to communities. But I think that's certainly something we can ask and perhaps ask TRC to look at to ensure people are engaged with it. I have noticed, because I filled it in myself the other day, there is a long version and a short version, so there's a kind of one way you can just, I presume, because I did the long version, you can give fairly straightforward answers to questions, whereas the long version involved a lot of chewing and throwing between quite a long document that describes the process. So there is some, there is a consultation going on. How engaging that consultation is, I think, is another question. And the only other point I'd make is that certainly at the Local Government Association Conference that myself and other colleagues went to recently, the whole question around devolution and how that works is very, very much under discussion. devolution and how that works is very, very much under discussion with local authorities and through the LGA in particular, lots of discussions taking place as to how that will work. I have got Elle next. Oh, oh, Mike, is it relevant to this question in particular or is it something separate? Separate, I'll bring in Elle then.
Thank you, Chair. And I just wanted to start by, by passing on thanks to the officers and partners who were involved in organising the event that many of us participated in. I think it was the first event that I've attended in, in my role on governance committee and I was really impressed with the level of engagement that we had, particularly from voluntary sector colleagues and the university partners and, and quite a diverse range of organisations that really kind of got stuck in and were bringing a lot of their knowledge and experience to the table, which I thought, given that we're talking about how do we engage with people, it was a really nice example of the way, one of the ways in which we can engage with people. And I, I was, I also thought there was quite a lot of kind of alignment of aspiration in the room. And, you know, I agree with colleagues that, that there was, we, there was a sense that perhaps where, where we've got to with some of the externally provided models wasn't quite right for Sheffield, but there wasn't that much disagreement of what better might look like. And, you know, as uncertain as we are about precisely what that is, there was a sort of shared sense of, of ambition and aspiration for that, which was, which was really great to see and, and at a high level too. And like colleagues, I, you know, I've got lots of thoughts about how we might take the model or framework or whatever we end up calling it, however, how we might take that forward. But my question was more think, sort of reflecting on the conversation we're having here and with, and, and the conversation we had in the workshop, I suppose, which is that there are some parts, accepting the involve framework for a second, some parts of that framework that are quite familiar to staff and to, to elected members too. Because they're the way in which we currently engage with communities. So, so the kind of consult level is very much the sort, in the guise of the kind of statutory environment that we've been in. It's the way that we do things with the technology that we've been provided with. It's what we're used to, go and ask people what they think and then take their thoughts on board and make a decision without them. But the other end of the, the involve model, if you like, when we're thinking about co-production and, and community ownership and things like that, I think, you know, it's fair, fair to say that those are less familiar or less widely familiar. And perhaps certainly, I think it's fair to say among, among elected officers, but also probably among the staff too. And so it's great to hear about this community of practice that you've set up within, within the council where you're sharing kind of examples and skills and building that expertise. And I wondered if you could say a bit more about the plans that you've got in place for that kind of skill development in particular and getting people to feel more confident and competent in you doing things in a way that they haven't, haven't done already. And I guess also and ask about whether that might also be something that could be extended to councillors so that we can develop our skills and competence in that too.
So the community practice you referenced, Council Dodd, is, is officers. It's been, it's in its early stages, but it's a fairly open invite to those who are involved in, yes, to use the phrase, more traditional consultation, but now moving into engagement. That group is the group that have had an input in developing that foundations of good engagement that we've talked about, that officers will use. And part of that is about the skilling up. I think at the minute, the skilling up is around sharing and learning. And we're now getting to a point where that group will want to kind of do hard, hard, kind of some hardcore, it's sort of asks, if you like, for the new skills that they might need or have we got them across the organisation? We've done a little bit of work within that group. So I think there is something more to be done around that. What are the skills that, that we need? That then feeds into probably a, a financial demand, if you like. May not be, it might be we've got enough. And I think perhaps that's a really good point I need to take away to that community practice. We have done a little bit of work, but not enough to actually ask those people, what are the skills? Now we've got these foundations, what are the skills that you feel you need to help you do that? The foundations themselves kind of lead you very much to thinking about what time you need and what resources you need. And that then suggests that that's an ask back within your services, within your directorates. And I think there is something around how that plays, plays out. I think James is probably a better place to answer some of that, but I think we're at that point of this will probably come with a cost. We don't actually know what that cost is yet. And how, how do we make sure that happens and that that isn't a barrier, that the skills aren't a barrier? And I think, you know, to hear you say that, actually something that to be shared in members, absolutely. But in terms of understanding what the community practice is about, already they want to be working with hearing from members. So we've now, in, in a place where we want to try and work out what that feedback loop is. That's not about skills, that's actually about sharing, learning and working together and understanding. And I, and I, because members are a very good source of insight. And I think it's about flagging that up. And the foundations do pick up on that. So for me, forgive me, James, but for me, we're now in a place where it's about, are we moving into, is there a cost associated with this? Do we actually know? And I'm not in a position to be able to say exactly what might happen with that and what won't happen with that. This is a bit of a slightly fudgy answer, but I'm doing my best. James, I don't know.
Thanks, thanks, Alice. Thanks, Council Dodd, for the, for the question. I think it's a, it's a really important one. So ensuring that our workforce has the skills, is developed and has the confidence, frankly, to be able to, to do this well is, is critically important. I think to, to Alice's point about resources, yes, of course, that will, that will come into it. But my, my, I think my response to that would be, we can't actually afford not to do this. By, by not doing this well, we, we call ourselves more cost, more time, more effort and frankly, we end up with a worse result. So we, yes, we'll need to find a way through it, but it's, it's really, really critical to getting this right and making sure that we've got that real baseline. And that also that we recognise that this is a key professional capability for our workforce. And I think that's really important that we recognise it in, in that sense as well and in the same way that we would other, other key kind of professional capabilities. Final thing, just very briefly, is that we are able to make use of some of the national networks that we are part of. So Local Government Association do quite a lot of work around this, but also other organisations that we're members of, such as New Local, who run some really excellent stuff that we are able to access through our, through our membership. We need to make more use of that, frankly. So I think work to do, but absolutely it's, it's key to getting this right and we'll make sure we focus on it.
Thank you. Mike?
Thanks, Chair. Interesting discussion. I've been as longstanding from the very start, I think, in overview and scrutiny of looking at committee systems. I remember us looking outside at a number of committee systems, none of which we thought would suit our needs. And mainly because they were done for political reasons. We were mandated by the citizens of Sheffield to provide a system whereby all the councillors were involved in the decision making. That was a fundamental basis on which this was set up. And we aren't going to have in the period of 10 years that we have to operate this system, a fixed system that will fit throughout that period of time. Because clearly politically, with the change of government, there will be changing in decision making powers, as Tim's quite rightly said, through the mayoral authority, but also other things will be coming through the mayoral authority and accountabilities, which will take some of the powers away from this city and transfer them to the mayoral authority. We have to work out how we run the governance with that in mind. So I don't think we're going to end up with a final solution that works. I think we'll still be doing this in nine years' time or less than seven years' time in the final year. And I think we just have to have that flexibility and that open mind to examine what's best for the city and keep it moving forward. Thank you.
Thanks, mate. Paul put it, I was just thinking, that was such an appropriate time to move on to the committee remits item. But Paul, bring it.
I haven't really participated in this discussion because I've been enjoying everybody else's contributions and I didn't really feel like I had much to add. But I just couldn't help that when Mike says we've got seven years left of this. That's, no, mate, no, no, it was a minimum of 10 years. We're not going to throw it out after 10 years. That was something that former Labour leader in the council used to say, we've got, we're stuck with it for 10 years now. It's like, no, no, this is, you know, this is how we're doing things, you know? We're not, it's not a, it's not a, there's not a cut off date, Mike.
As I say, that was the last contribution. And as you say, Mike, I think, you know, there will be ongoing change and obviously governance is an ongoing process and, you know, everything that we are doing here will always be subject to change and we need to be flexible enough to be able to deal with that. I think that does bring us quite neatly onto the next item, which is reviewing, oh, but I need to go through the recommendations, I apologise. So the recommendations are to note the output from the community engagement workshop held on the 5th of September, to note the proposed timeline for the working group for co-producing a vision, to consider support and agree the immediate next steps of a collaborative workshop around models of engagement and what would work for Sheffield, the working group to continue to establish and refine how we work widely and collaboratively with partners and community in the city to co-produce the vision, drawing up a programme of involvement for the stages in the timeline, and the working group to provide updates to governance committee as work progresses. Is everybody happy with those recommendations? Yep, seeing odds, thank you. So we will move on to item eight, which is reviewing our policy committee remits. And Jason, I think you're going to take us through this one.
Thank you, Chair. There's a brief presentation just to bring out the main points from the report. So you've had the report and there's an appendix set of slides which we used in the workshop sessions with, with members. So this report is to update really on the moment in time where we've got to with the work on reviewing committee remits. Thanks, Alan. So activity to date, so I wanted just to summarise that, give an overview of the key issues that have come out from the discovery work with members that we've done during the summer and then just to briefly outline next steps. And then there are some recommendations on the report for members as well. Thanks. So what we've done so far is we've established a task and finish group which scopes out the review and has begun work on the work plan, which was agreed in July. We've done engagement work with members. So the members are engaged in the policy committees. We've been talking to, to them and that's included sort of three, the work's included three elements really. The first is reflecting on the evidence that we gathered from the six month review of committees and using the insight from that to really focus on parts of the remits review that we want to look at. We've had interviews with all of the policy committee chairs and that includes chairs of other committees as well, including health scrutiny and charity trustees. And then we've had drop in engagement sessions following policy committee meetings with members to get as many views really on some key questions as possible. Thanks, Alan. So the three areas of focus for us was it's quite, it's quite a large piece of work. So we wanted to try and make it less unwieldy. So we've divided, we've got three themes running through this, which members will be familiar with. I'm having worked on the work on the working group. The first was what's the alignment to the council's strategic ambitions? So what, how would that work to best deliver the council plan and our strategies in the council? And then how do we lead complex cross cutting issues and cross cutting themes is something that crops up again in this to make sure that we're really focused on what's the ambition for our committee model as we, as we develop and as evolves over time. Secondly, making sure we deliver the policy committee responsibilities effectively. So getting that balance right between the committees making decisions, doing policy development, looking at the, the opportunities for, for review of decisions and performance and then looking at relative workload of committees, making sure decisions are made at the right level and in the right place. And then also reference there to local area committees and relationship there. So really much about balance and actually what the committees are doing day to day. Do we feel that that, that's right? And then the third, third one, there's two twos there, apologies, was improving and clarifying and simplifying the responsibilities. So were there particular issues, anomalies in the way we've constructed the remits of the committees? Making sure we're really clear about the roles of the committees. There aren't any gaps, are there issues that don't really have a home that we need to make sure are dealt with? And also dealing with any constitutional issues and procedure rules as well. Thanks. Little bit of a closer look really against those three themes then. So the first one was our strategic ambitions and alignment to those. So there's, from the discovery work, there's a feeling that there is a real sense of purpose and direction following the developments of our council plan. And there are strong examples of, of forward planning, robust forward planning in policy Members told us there was a risk of silos, silo working, really busy agendas, really focused on particular work areas and functions and potentially not being able to pull out and see that the, the wider focus on the outcomes and the way things fit together. I think that's something that came across. The example given there was the city centre where there are cross cutting issues in there. So certainly maybe opportunities to create more space for committees working jointly on, on issues where things fall in between the committees. Making sure again that there's cross cutting themes are, are owned by committees. And so there might be one that takes a lead, but again, given the opportunities for that cross working, examples perhaps, climate change, health and wellbeing, prosperity, those are quite big sort of themed areas there. And then finally on that one, the more direct alignment with the council plan and our strategies, making sure that we, we are focused on those and given that the committees were put together before we had that in place and making sure we're actually taking a look, look at how that, how that actually works now. Thank you. So the second packet of, of themes was about making sure the committees deliver their responsibilities effectively. So planning is something that came out as a, as a real issue, making sure that there are, there are work plans in place for policy development. And we think that's really important, that, that the work programmes reflect that. There are some really good examples of this and I think we want to make sure we build on best practice. So there's some really good reflections that we've, we've, we've found in the development work, in the discovery work that we've been doing and good work in between officers and members. A better balance of activities. So there's still, again, this, this issue about how much decision making is being done by committees, how much are members involved in policy development, strategy development and review of those policies in the work they're doing. And then the issue of imbalance in the demands on particular committees, some very overstretched, which then has a knock on because they're very focused on taking decisions through it, not necessarily having the time to do the other work like the policy development that we, we consider might be appropriate. Thanks. And a couple more on, on this one. So culture and standards was something that came across quite strongly. So we want to make sure members and members of the public and offices are well served by the system we've got. So making sure there's a common understanding of what briefings are about and who's invited to those briefings, for example, pre-agenda and pre, pre-meetings, quality of report writing, making sure they're accessible and the reports do what they need to do in terms of giving members the information they need to make decisions. And that, one of the things we heard was that reports are, you know, often quite, quite lengthy and then there is some, that issues or pressures on time for everybody. And then just making sure we're very clear about our language and our terms that we use. So what is a briefing? When we talk about policy review, what do we mean by that and what do we mean by policy development? And then the other issue is seeing the system as And then the other issue is seeing the system as a whole. So not just in terms of council outcomes, but also responsibilities and relationships in relation to partners and communities. And before we mention this afternoon, the South Yorkshire American Blind Authority has been one example of that. Thanks. And then the final set is improving, clarifying and simplifying the responsibilities of the committees. So there are opportunities for particular specific changes to committees and they're highlighted in the, in the slide back that we've been, we've shared with the committee. Build early experience, making sure there's focus and coherence in what committees doing. But some of them, that, that information is very much, everything we've gathered and is potentially contradictory at times. So we need to be able to, for the working groups, we had to sort through that and actually come to, come to some proposals for those. Comments about full council came up during the conversations with members. And we know that's something we want to look at as part of the work programme item later on in the, in the meeting. And then also their local area committees and the work that's going on, the conversations that's going on with the committees and the communities around the way, the way that the meetings work and that work is underway. Thank you. And then next steps, which is about developing proposals. So the working group is going to work together during November and December. And I think we have some dates being prepared for that. To, to focus on insight based on the discovery phase that we've undertaken during the summer. There's a recognition that lots of this is interconnected. We want to be able to begin by taking a wider view on the, the way the committee system can serve the strategic outcomes and of council and the council plan delivery. And then possibly some shorter workshops based on particular areas of work and issues. So we can focus on those, have opportunity to test those ideas both with the political groups on the council and officers. To make sure we sort of get some proposals that we feel have got some potential and some buy in. And then regular reports back to this committee, just like today really. Just to, to check in and make sure there's, that we're publicly reporting the work that the, that the working group is doing. Thanks, that's, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Jason, perhaps just a point, I know we did note it at the last meeting as well. But I think we did discuss at the last meeting how potentially involving some of those wider stakeholders at certain stages. Including people like Sheffield Oversight and Scrutiny who've got a real interest in this work would, would be useful. And I know that touches on some of the questions that Ruth asked via email prior to this meeting. Does he, any other questions or contributions? Paul?
Thanks very much. Just a couple of things. And, and I know that we're not, this is not where we're kind of discussing our thoughts to deliver them. We'll be doing that in workshops, won't we? But just on the, on the number of committees is that I, I don't think, I don't think it would suit Sheffield to have a smaller number of committees. You know, the size of the committees would be very large and the workloads would be also very large. I think smaller councils, smaller local authorities have committee systems with maybe three, four or five committees. I don't think that works for Sheffield, you know, we're one of, one of the biggest local authorities in the country. And so, so I wouldn't like to see us reducing the number of committees. And while I appreciate it, this, this suggestion that it would fit better with the, what do we call it? The council plan objectives, you know, this isn't a metric system, you know. We've kind of already created problems by trying to crowbar the committees into the directorate. And now the directorates have changed again anyway. You know, I think we need to really be focused on what are the areas that these committees should have in their portfolio? And, and, and work it that way around and the directorate should be able to work with whatever committees are appropriate and multiple committees. Just my thoughts on that anyway. Like I said, I know we're working on that in workshops. The other point I wanted to make is just that while, while we're, we're working with this, something we established is the inconsistency with briefings for different committees. And, and so my thinking is, is that all members of the committee should be invited to all briefings. And that's how we, that's, that's really where decisions are steered. And, and all members of the, of the committee should be entitled to go to those meetings. Doesn't happen in every, every committee. And, and in fact, I've been invited as a substitute for education, childrens and families. I've been invited to their briefing, which is taking place now, but, but it overlaps. So I'll be joining it after we've finished here. But you know, that's, that feels to me like the right way to go, very inclusive. And, and, and so to that point, I, I don't think we need to wait till the end of, of this process to, to try and, to not encourage, but to actually mandate that all of the policy committees invite all members. And why not all substitute members to every briefing? That could be done right away and I, I hope that's something we can do.
Thanks, Paul. I know that has been flagged up and I think it's particularly important at the moment, actually, while we're having all briefings about the budget and so on, and making sure that as many people as possible are able to participate in those. I don't know if you wanted to respond to any of that, Jason?
Thanks. I think we'll, we'll consider sort of, certainly the thing around consistency, briefings and quality of reports. And that whole thing around standards and expectations is something that has come out as part of the discovery work quite strongly. And it's something we can actually practically work on to make sure there's a, there's a common understanding and common offer. In terms of members' involvement in particular stages of the committee as well, but also looking at, you know, the, what the reports look like and, and the behaviours and things like that. It is really useful. On the terms of number of committees, I think we've, we've got some work to do in terms of, you know, looking at the shape and looking at our lines with and the wider objectives of the council and the strategies. But also balancing that with considering, you know, workloads and ability to do these other pieces of work like policy development versus decision making and things like that. So there's probably a wide number of things to consider in that. Thanks.
Thanks. It might be worth mentioning, and I'm saying it partly for Ruth's benefit, who I can see is leaving, but I know raised questions about this. So quite often when we're talking about policy development and review, that's probably what we would under another former system have called scrutiny. And I know it was really useful hearing Mel Stevens from the Centre for Governance and Scrutiny at the Fila Cities event last week. And I've caught up with her sense and exploring some of the comments that she made around scrutiny. And I think we can feed into this some more. So, but thank you for coming, both of you, and see you another time. I'll take Mike.
Thanks, Chair. I was with you, Paul, right up to the end. And that's when, I'm afraid, I went away. There are some committees and finances are particularly committed where there's a lot of detailed discussion on things that really like capital program, that sort of thing, which really spokespeople are there to do. But then there are certain things which do come in advance in a pre-agenda meeting, which we agree we will take out. And we're going to now have all members invited to discuss that particular topic because it has wide area in. So we want that flexibility to be able to do that because we have, we do spend a lot of time in briefing and pre-agenda meetings. And we don't want, it's better that the key spokespeople are there for all those. And then we pick out the important ones and then take with the other members. Thanks.
Thanks, Mike. Mary?
Thanks. I suppose I was just thinking, again, what Paul was saying and what Mike just said about, about all member briefings and how that works. And I think if you, if the referendum that took place said all councillors should make decisions that affect the city. Then all councillors should have the right information in order to make those decisions. And sometimes that's not happening, is it? And we know that some policy committees are excellent and some need to catch up a bit. So that's work that's undergoing and I'm fine. But I just want to, you know, Paul talked about the council plan and the reduction in committees. I'd like to see how that would work in a practical sense and what would we build into that to make sure that there's no overload of work for people, for members? And how they can get, how, how, how members would be involved in the work of that committee in, of a committee that was aligned to the council plan? So I think that we need to have a, a better look at that, I think. And I'd, I'd welcome a look at that at some kind of, some future briefing meeting.
I think the idea over the next few months is to, to develop some different iterations. So it's not a case that we have to make a decision right now about which way we're going. We can look at some different iterations and then discuss the pros and cons of those. Any comments on that, Jason?
No, thanks, Chair. I think you've, you've said that. So we, we will start perhaps with a, that that's higher level look about the focus of the, to the system. And then just rehearsing what's changed since we introduced the system, including the, the council plan and the objectives. And then look at how, how we might actually make different proposals to, that might reflect that. But also take account of all the other things that we've looked at in the discovery work as well. So I think it's a balance of looking at all those things. Thanks.
Thanks, Elle.
Thank you and thanks for the update. And I'm just thinking about this, listening to the comments and the questions. And I, I think I can see a real merit to thinking about this through the lens, it's a bit like thinking about priority focused budgeting, right? Like priority focused governance. If we, if we've got committees that have got a kind of, a thing they're driving towards. And that thing being currently being, being best articulated in the council plan, I think that's got a lot of merits. But I do hear what you're saying, that, that that has consequences, right? And that there's a way of thinking about.
Sorry, Elle.
No, it's fine, thank you. And I did, I was saying that, I do hear what you were saying about the kind of consequences that that might have. And I guess that started to make me think about the importance of whatever we end up with. And there's always going to be things that cut across multiple committees. There's always going to be things that are only kind of temporarily a priority. There's always going to be things that are actually best dealt with in one committee or another. But that a subs, an additional committee sort of has a small stake in, for example. And, and so there's something about how do we make sure that whatever way we cut the cake, those kind of links and connections between the different committees are really strong. And I, I personally had a thought the other day, which I'll, I'll say out loud now because it, it might be on one of those things we could do immediately without having to wait for it. And which is that I know that we all get an email saying what's been agreed in, in other committee meetings. And but it's not terribly easy without delving into that email to know whether those things might relate to your committee particularly. And I'm thinking, I guess, particularly about S and R, which obviously the, the agenda of which changes frequently. Finance similarly, sometimes we're talking about housing things, sometimes we're talking about children's things. And so if there were a way of those emails just more readily saying, hello, if you're on this committee, you should read this in detail. And if you're not, then you probably don't need to pay it quite so much attention. That would be really helpful as a busy member trying to keep abreast of the things that I'm responsible for. Thanks.
Thank you. Do you want to respond there? Or we can take another?
Thanks. Yeah, so that we do send out the decisions of each committee. And yeah, it is, is normally it's the resolutions each committee has taken. So yeah, they are quite technical and quite unwieldy. So we could look at doing something more, that's more focused. Maybe more about communications and the structure of committees, which is, yeah, which is a really important point. Thank you.
Thanks, Sue. Yeah, just, just on that, I'd actually had exactly the same thought when I was looking at one the other day. This just needs to be flagged up. Who needs to look at what? That would be really, really good. And I just, with regard to this piece of work, I just feel we spent two years and had loads of witnesses. And we did lots of deep dive into things like the overall structure of the committee system. And we spent a lot of time working on how many committees, how they could relate to each other and everything. And it took a huge length of time. My understanding of this piece of work that was not around, let's tear it all up and start again. But much more around, do we need to actually look at how we've divided the work up and share it out a bit better? And I feel that we're now moving into the realms of tear everything up and start again. And in which case we will never get to the, let's sort out the remits and make them work a bit better by March. Because that piece of work that we did with the, you know, the number of witnesses we had, the, you know, people coming in to advisors and information about how many committees we had, how we structured it, took a long time. It took numerous workshops and two years of work. And my understanding when we asked for this piece of work wasn't that we were going to tear everything up and start again. But that we were actually just going to look at the remits and see if we could even out the workload. And, and I, I just fear that if we take it too, too much, back too far, we actually won't make any progress at all. And we'll still be sat here in 12 months' time, two years' time, going back over and over and over the same ground. So yeah, for, for what it's worth, I think we should focus on what I feel we were set up to do with this piece of work. Which is actually look at the remits rather than tearing up the structure and starting again.
Okay, I suppose my reflection on that is that I'd hope we're building on that work and not just like discounting it completely. And that we do have a lot more evidence now of the system in practice that we need to reflect on as well. And I am aware as well of some of the challenges around things like how the public are able to engage with committees and things like that, which were, which I know we've discussed a little bit earlier, that I think it would be a shame not to look at while we're doing this piece of work. But I will pass on Mark, seeing your hand up.
Yeah, it just kind of leads on from Sue's point, just to make sure that we're not, I don't know whether it's losing the wood for the trees and just focusing on the two areas that would seem to me to be the, the lowest hanging fruit of committees where there is a clear disparity of workload and doing something about that. And then whether there is any really quite egregious policy areas that are in one committee. But anyone in the street would expect them to be in another one. And just heading those out and it might be actually flipping the order of those. Because I know the egregious difficulties and then see where the workload lies might be the, the right order. And purely personal view is that actually that's almost secondary to where do the competencies lie between the policy committees, regulatory committees, full council and the LAX? Because to me, that's the, that's the biggest difficulty in terms of explaining our governance to the person in the streets. And that actually, most people would assume that full council is the decision making body for the council, but, but it isn't. Very few decisions are made there. And I think that is a difficulty for people to understand. And we're almost willfully misexplaining to people how the council makes decisions by continuing to imply that full council is the sovereign body, which to all intents and purposes, it isn't in a committee led council. So I think that to me is, is almost more important than the remits.
Thanks, Mark. Brings a whole new layer to it. Jason, do you want to respond to that?
Thanks. I'm going to think back to the points about the, the, the terms of reference for the, for the group. I think it's one of the things we want the working group to look at actually, having, having got all this information from the discovery phase. What is it we want to focus on? Focus back on the three sort of areas of focus that we talked about. So yes, we talked about strategic ambitions, but we also talked about delivering, you know, the responsibilities effectively and how we work. So making sure we're focusing on the right things in putting forward the proposals that we want to put forward. And full council is one of the things and LAX that came out in the discovery work. And we know that we want to do something, a look at full council, but to do that as part of this committee's work programme later on, but I agree, actually explaining the system and making sure it's really clear what's done where and where there is a responsibility lies, which is really important. And I think there was an attempt to do that to some extent when we, we launched the committee system in a couple of years ago. But maybe we need to make sure we've, we've got that explanation right and clear in from where we are now. Thanks.
Thanks. I haven't got any further hands up, so I will take us through the recommendations. Paul, sorry, Mr. Chair.
Sorry, sorry, Chair. Just, just on the, on the LAX, because I know that's, we discussed that, didn't we? That there is a review of the LAX going ahead, but it's not part of this and it's not actually part of this committee, which is, which is also a bit odd. And so like I, I do feel that kind of, that the way, the way we work, we, we should really be under constant review or, or, you know, semi-constant review. Because it's, we ought not to think, right, we've done it. Because things change, people change. And of course, we, we are a people led organisation and whatever system we create or is created, it will be delivered slightly differently depending on who's doing it. So I think we do need to be aware that we are constantly looking at how things can be done better. And, and so, and on the LAX, I, I just, while it seems appropriate to mention it as we're talking about the committee system and going back and thinking back, that was a couple of years ago. Is that the LAX were, let's not beat around the bush, they were introduced at the last minute to try and win a referendum by Labour when they were in, in the administration. They were introduced right before PERP. And, and, and so they're only
And, 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 and so they're only going to be good if they're funded and if they're empowered. And if they're neither funded nor empowered, then there isn't really much point in having the LAX. You know, and I would say considering the, the budget pressures that the council's under, that, I mean, I couldn't tell you several million pounds it costs to, to run the LAX each year, that that could be a saving worth making. And, and, and something that we really need to seriously consider.
Thanks, Paul. I look forward to seeing the Greens' budgets proposal around that one. Mike?
I was with Paul until the last bit. But the LAX was probably in the whole of the process of setting up the committee system the most unsatisfactory outcome that we had. Because we never, never really clearly defined where their responsibilities were too. We initially talked about committees perhaps unless you've been responsible for LAX. But because a lot of the things they discuss cover a number of areas, we never really nailed that down about what is the relationship between the LAX and the policy committees. And I still think that's hanging over this. And I think this is a decision we need to resolve.
Thanks, Mike. Yes, take that on board as well. And I know lap chairs have got a workshop coming up, haven't they? We're starting to look at some of these. Mary, do you want to come in on that?
Yeah, I mean, one of the issues about LAX and engages is about public engagement and whether we have got the right format for engaging with the public. And I don't think we have. I think it, it could be done much better than it is. You know, for me, for public meetings a year, somebody said at our LAC meeting last month, it's a bit daunting going to something called a local area committee, where you think there're going to be a group of councillors sat round talking about stuff you don't understand and making decisions. And it's not like that and it shouldn't be like that. And we tend to, it isn't like that in reality, but we do need to do much better. And there was a lot of discussions initially about what the LAX should do and about devolution and evolving decisions downwards, and also about the LAC sending things to committees, which has never really happened. So it's all up for discussion.
Thanks. I do suggest that when the piece of work we talked about earlier about mapping how all this stuff fits together, that we do think about where the LAX fit into that as well. Okay, I've got no more hands up, so I'm going to go into the recommendations, which are to consider and discuss the initial insight from members as part of the discovery, discovery phase, which I think we've just done. Discuss the proposed next steps and approach for developing options for addressing the opportunities and challenges identified in the discovery phase. Agree to work together at pace over the coming months to develop and iterate proposals connecting to wider political groups to ensure wider member engagement in the review of the committees. Are we happy with those recommendations? Yep, thank you very much. That brings us on to item nine, which is the work plan. And I think Alice, you're presenting this one again.
Thanks, Chair. Yes, I always feel it's a bit self explanatory. However, there has been some conversation around some of the elements in it. So I don't know whether perhaps Jay wants to just talk through some of the possible amends. And also then for members of the committee to make some, to raise some questions around it. I think the thing you have to always remember is this is the ideal work programme. There is a little bit of prioritisation that needs to go on in terms of understanding commitments, input, what's, what's required for some of these. And reminding you that the governance committee doesn't have that many meetings this year, which was a conscious decision of the committee itself because of a lot of work ongoing outside of committing. That, that makes it feel exclusive, but it's not. It's, it's the, the at pace work that needs to happen with particularly the two items that have been on the agenda today. I think the tables that are important is page 82, where you've got proposed additions and amendments to the work programme since the last meeting. I think some of these have actually been lurking around for, for a while. It's just here, we've put a couple of dates to, to of them. One is reminding ourselves as well that there needs to be a review of public questions and the petition scheme. So the scheme that's now in place, that's raised a few public questions and statements today. And I've, you know, there's the, that needs to happen. And the idea is to put that on the timetable for the March meeting. Urgent decisions, just want to clarify that that is really the annual report that was said would happen, the annual reporting of the use of urgent decisions to date. Their last look, there weren't that many, so it's not felt this is likely to lead to any significant issues. However, it was said that there would be an annual reporting on, on the use of urgent decisions. So that will be March. It's also been, been reminded about an update on the GRIP, which if you remember, I think is the, is it the Governance Review Implementation Plan? That this was a fairly regular item last year. It hasn't been, but that it's important that there is an update. And I think we've agreed that in, that the best time for this might actually is officers certainly. And with a bit of a, a nudge from members is that this would be January and that what we'll bring to you in January is a kind of internal, external facing look at achievements and anything outstanding, just so that everyone's clear on, on that. And just to clarify that, that council motions, this was very much around a review of order of motions at full council. Nothing bigger or smaller, depending on how you feel about that as a, an, an item in itself. We haven't got a date for that. But obviously, I think something like the update on GRIP, we would try and do that definitely. As I say, for January, council motions, probably something for you to, to, to consider in your work plan and with a bit of an input from officers. I think I'm going to look to David on this one about the reality of when that might actually be able to happen. And if you could scroll on through and go to page 87, you've got the items you can expect at the future meetings. There's obviously today, there's one in January and there's one in March. And a bit of a rejig to make sure that we get the right things. At the end, you've got three items that have yet to been agreed to add to an agenda. There's been a little bit of a conversation suggesting that perhaps the charity subcommittee and the role of SCC may actually find its place in the community engagement work in terms of it's about, you know, how, how we engage. And it's a project, essentially a, a sort of what has been classed as a demonstrator project to actually look at how that's worked in practice and what, what, what the issues might be. So I think it falls neatly into the community engagement work as a work stream. Changes to delegation, a sense of that in a way that links very heavily with remit's work. So it should be an element of that. And then measuring the health of the committee system, this is about performance metrics. We know this needs to happen and it probably makes sense to kind of hang it into the, the remit's timeline at some appropriate point, which I think what I'm saying is that's not yet. You need more work. We need to understand the remits. We need to understand those elements and what that means before we can start really thinking about metrics and, and talking through that with yourselves. If that's all right, Chair.
Thank you, Alice. David, do you want to comment on the notice of motions work?
Yes, if, if it's going to come here, then it needs to come before the AGS because it's, AG, I'm just an email about the AGS, the AGM, because that's when we're wanting to implement any changes to it.
I'm wondering with that one in particular, so if this is in relation to, excuse me, the proportionality of motions and the order in which they come to council for the different groups, excuse me. I think that has been quite a lot of discussion at WIPs around this. So I wonder if that's something we could bring sooner or later.
If I speak, will you cough? Does that help? I was just going to comment that in full council yesterday, there was also the issue raised of amending one's own motion. And I wondered if the work that's being done on motions either here or by WIPs could pick that up too, whether that would be a helpful place to, to discuss that.
Or, yeah, or we'd look at that as part of the review of full council. And we, I think WIPs might want to discuss that in the meantime. But I should think if we were going to make some wholesale changes to how we deal with motions and that might be when we do the review of full council.
Thank you. Yeah, just one or two comments. Firstly, thank you for putting the GRIP work in as a bit of a completer finisher mentality. I do like to see things brought to a conclusion. So that is good. I do, I don't know, I might be wrong. But, you know, we were, I was talking earlier about the, that I, in my view, we need to keep the remit's work focused on remit. And that the bigger sort of look at how the committees fit and how they function. I would have imagined, but I may be wrong, so I'm happy to be corrected, is part of the work we should be doing under the health of the committee system when we, when we look at that and, and see how the whole system is, is functioning together. In terms of the notice of motion order proposals, I understand this is about actually having a, a plan of how we agree each year what the order will be. I know it's been bashed around at two or three WIPs meetings without agreement or consensus being reached. And, and I do think we need, for the sake of the officers, apart from anything else and everybody who's planning anything, we, we do need to move that. Because I, and I know I've said this in briefing meetings, we're going to have a heck of a lot of work in March. So we do need to bring things sooner. The other thing I was just going to mention was just in relation to Alice's comment about council motions. That is something we did discuss at length in workshops last year, eleven years before, at the time when we brought in the word limits and all that sort of stuff. So yes, it's right to review it and we should review it, but you can't review something every month. So you need to sort of give it 12 months at least before you review it, would be my view.
Thanks. So, sorry, I've got other hands up. I'll take those first. Paul and then Mary.
Well, I was going to say what Sue said really, and it's been discussed, order of motions have been discussed in the WIPs meeting on a number of occasions. No consensus has been reached. It's become ever more convoluted. And I think to settle things, it was proposed, so it came here.
Thanks. And so back to the LAX. I was just wondering if we can add an item in the next meeting in January to, to ask the, the team that's working on the LAX at the moment, working on the reworking of the LAX, if they can come here and we can find out exactly what's, you know, obviously we all sit on a lack, a lack. It would be nice to see, it'd be nice to have them come and, and, and tell us what they, their findings and, and their plans across the city. And apart from that, you know, this is the governance committee and I think this is a, a good place to do that in a public forum as well. It's also, we keep talking about, oh, how do the LAX connect to the council? You know, so if they're off on their own working, it's, it just, it's, it sounds like a better way would, well, they can connect with the council by coming here and discussing what they've, their findings with us. So, and as we've only got two items in January, if they're by that point in a position to share, then could we add that to January's meeting?
I'm not sure that'll work, Paul, to be honest, but we can make the inquiries. As I understand it, a lot of the work around LAX is linked to future Sheffield as well. So I think we just need to, and again, it comes back to a bit of that understanding around how all the pieces of work around community engagement and so on. But it's not the case that LAX are sat there doing a piece of work all on their own that, and with no reference to anybody else. I don't think that is what's happening. But we can certainly bring some clarification around it and look at potentially how we can bring it to a future committee meeting, but be reluctant to put it on the next agenda without having a clearer idea behind how that would be looked at. Can I just, I will come to you in a second on that one. But as I understand it, then they were proposing that the GRIP come to the January meeting in addition to what's on here. Could the notice of motions work come to the January meeting as well? It feels to me as if it could because there's been a lot of discussion in the WIPs. And I am conscious that we've got probably less items on that January agenda. So I'm not against doing that. We are talking about the public questions review in March and having that piece of work. Then there was a question around, and the urgent questions report will come there. Then there is a question around the delegations, which I agree should be within the full, the remit work. I'm seeing nods to that. So I'm just putting these out as proposals. People can come in and disagree with them if they need to. The charities work, I have had a very initial conversation with the chair of the charity subcommittee about that, who is quite keen to do that piece of work as well. So I'll pick that up with officers. And we'll see whether we can look at doing that as part of the community engagement work. Some of that is about officer capacity, I think, as well. We just need to be clear around that. And then I know we have discussed that review of full council, which would be in the next municipal year. So the first meeting of the next municipal year to potentially kick that work off. I'll come back to the LAX stuff, but that's my understanding of where we've got to on this work plan. Have I missed anything there? And is there anything that people disagree with there in terms of when things are coming? Sue?
Yeah, thanks. I agree with what we've got on there. I think we've only got two meetings and I think the March meeting, we are going to have to spend quite a bit of time going through the outcomes of the two big working groups we've got. However, I do agree with Paul. I think it'd be really useful for us to have some update on what is actually happening with LAX. I mean, we've just looked along here and we're all going, did you know about that? And I'd sort of heard a bit, Mike had heard something else, you know. And that's the problem. People don't know what's happening. So I think if we can't have it as an actual committee item and if there's no decision making, then I think there's no decision making, it's less essential. Could we at least have it as a briefing item? I think that would be useful for everybody.
Thanks. And I think it'd be useful to bring that piece about mapping out how all these pieces of work fit together, basically as an item for information as well, either at a briefing or to a future committee meeting. I'm seeing nods to that. Are people happy with what we've proposed then for the work plan? Is that clear, Alice, that you're happy that you know what's coming up when? Any other, any other comments in relation to the work plan? Okay, so the recommendations here are that the committee's work programme be agreed, including any additions and amendments or items to be confirmed in part, to be confirmed. It makes sense that recommendation, to be confirmed, we'll say in part one. And to note the items that need more intensive work and consider the impact on capacity and implications for prioritisation of remaining items and or additions to the government's committee's forward work plan, which I think is what we've just done. Is everybody in agreement with those recommendations? Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the end of our meeting. So the date of the next meeting is 16th of January 2025 at 10am. Thank you, everybody. And thanks to all the officers for all your work on the reports.